Alderman Catalino.
No, no, no.
Catalano. Alderman.
What do you hear?
Here.
There you go.
So, do I say here? Do I say here?
Mr. Shirley?
Do I say the last name?
Mayor Amaranta Aguilar. City Manager Dylan Kills.
Well, we gotta say here.
Here.
Say here.
City Manager Dylan Kills.
Here.
City Attorney Olivia.
Here.
Treasurer Moses Artega.
Here.
Alderman Aaliyah Kershaw.
Here.
Alderman Isabella Thomas.
Here.
Alderman Angelina Ivanova.
Here.
Alderman Gabriela Sanchez.
Here.
Alderman Javier Rosas.
Here.
Alderman Aileen Aranda.
Here.
Alderman Justina Mrosi.
Here.
Alderman Christos Papadopoulos.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to get a roll call for the City Council.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Saz Marsky.
Here.
Alderman E Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R Wesley. And Alderman Woods.
Here.
And me.
And Mayor.
And Mayor Police.
Here.
I declare a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd, 2019.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I mean, second.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries. Do any sentences like to be heard? No matters on the agenda.
We have, we have one person, Mr. Roy Stevenson. Yeah, if you'd like to go to the podium, your public comment is three minutes.
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. This was not the audience that I was expecting this evening, so, um... I actually came to speak about a very serious matter. I'm not sure if it's appropriate with this audience. But the pledge that we just ended, uh, we said liberty and justice for all. And injustice has been occurring in the city of Wooddale for over twenty years. At 203 Irving Park Road, innocent and defenseless children have been taken there three days a week, and harm has been done to them. And I've come here to ask this council to take action. It is both your duty, uh, and you have the power to interpose and protect these children. Your duty involves the Fourteenth Amendment, which states that all human beings, all, all people, um, have a right to equal protection and a right to life. And you have sworn an oath to uphold this. You also have the power, uh, there are over five hundred cities that have been, city councils just like this one, minus the children, um, have declared the cities to be sanctuary cities for undocumented immigrants. They're ignoring the federal government's laws. You have the power to ignore unjust Supreme Court opinions. So you have the power to do this, and you have taken an oath to do this. If, if nothing is done, children are gonna be harmed tomorrow morning as well. If, if, if there's any question about the science, um... It, you should, I, I, I brought handouts for all of you that explain when a life begins, at the moment of conception. And there are images in here that show what abortion victims look like, and I would like each of you to look at that.
Excuse me, you know, and I think you're absolutely correct. This is not the appropriate audience.
Right.
Sunny.
Right, well-
Sunny, hold on, Sunny. You have, no problem.
Yeah.
Everybody's allowed three minutes.
Yeah, so I, I believe that the City Council is absolutely, absolutely the proper forum for this discussion. So, um, right.
Right.
Right. And that's why, that's why I didn't, I didn't give the talk that I, that I prepared. But, um, yeah, in, in closing, I'd just like to say that, um, you've been given your, your position on this council by God. God ordains everything that happens, and he's put you in power, and he's reminded us that the proper role of government is to protect. You've been given a responsibility, responsibility to protect the innocent children of Wooddale. And you will be held accountable for how you use that power. We will all be held accountable. And our only hope is repentance and faith in Jesus. And I, I would urge you to do that today and to take a stand to protect these children. Tomorrow's not guaranteed, but we're all gonna have to answer for what we did with our time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Is there anyone else who would like to have an address at council?
If you could please go to the podium.
If you could please go to the podium?
Hello, everybody. My name is Victoria. I live at, uh, 333 Oak Avenue in Wooddale. Um, I'm having some issues with some construction that's going on next to my house. I've already been in contact with the inspector and someone else from the, the village office. I'm not getting any calls back, and I have problems with erosion and the, the structure of my, my garage, and I'm not getting any answers. And I just, I-
I'm sorry, what was the address again?
333 Oak Avenue.
Okay. Mr. Cage is sitting right next to you. He'd be happy to talk to you outside.
Okay.
If, anything else you wanted to say, or?
No, that's it.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? I have one written, "Communicate." "May 14th, 2019, to whom it may..." "To whom it may concern, we currently hold a package liquor license in Wooddale, number 1828, and we would like to add a tasting license, also called an on-premise license. Thank you and advice, and be regarded." Pete Duffy-
No, it's okay.
Oh, okay.
And so just so the council understands, uh, we do have another thing coming to committee in a couple of weeks, uh, which we had to request from Franks. This is another request. We have a business that's been in town a while, Chicago Wine Company. So, uh, we just got the, the chief received the letter, and, uh, so we can address this one at the same time, providing, uh, we have direction to move forward from the council.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. You have a motion in a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Only her two eyes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Mayor's report. We have one proclamation. The education of our youth is important. Student Government Day. May sixteenth, May 16th, 2019. Whereas, the education of our youth is important to the future of our city, state, and nation. And where, where has this? Teaching students to be involved and knowledgeable about local government is something we should always strive to be doing. And where has, where has students from Westview Elementary School learned about local government today? And from city officials and warehouses? We wish to honor the students, teachers, and city officials who participated on this day. Now therefore, I, on... I, Amaranta Aguilar, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 16th, 2019, Student Government Day in Wooddale, Illinois. I need a motion to approve the reappointment of Dory Madonna for a three-year term of the storm water management.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I say second.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes. City Managers' Report.
I have one item tonight, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to show a new video that staff has been working on to explain better to residents at home what a city parkway is. I hope everybody enjoys the video, which will be available on the city website and YouTube. This concludes my report.
Now I would like to hear the tre, the city council on what they would like to see in the future in Wooddale. Starting with the treasurer.
Uh, my name is Moises Artega, and I, uh, I like Wooddale how it is right now.
Thank you. And the young lady Olivia. Aldermen, Alderwomen.
My, my name is Olivia Blazin, and I wanna change the pollution by the, the metro chains.
Thank you. Starting to the left. Isabella Thomas.
I think Wooddale's good just how it is right now.
Next, Justina.
I think we should make, like, um, build a better condition at the Wooddale pool. People would be more welcome if we built like a new slide or like a diving board. I think more people would come.
Next, Javier.
I would like to see, um, parks that have more entertainment than others.
Next, Angelina.
I would like, um, to, uh, so there could be more pools and pool parks during the summer, because after a while, it gets a little boring at the same pool.
Next, City Manager Dylan.
I would like the parks to be bigger and about more parks. And I wish the, the meetings were shorter.
If the city manager makes smaller agendas, it would be shorter. Next, City Attorney Hubert. Next, City Clerk Taylor.
I think we should get rid of some rides from the Prairie Fest, just because usually there's people getting hurt on some rides.
Next, Alderman Christos. Um, I like Wooddale how it is, how it is now. Next, Alderman Aaliyah.
I would like to help raise money for Wooddale, Wooddale by making, by opening a business, like a frozen yogurt, yogurt shop.
Next, Alderman Gabbi, Gabriella.
I would like to make more family events to get, so people could get to know, uh, more about the community. But I like Wooddale how it is.
Next, Alderman Aileen.
Well, I think Wooddale is good how it is.
I would like, maybe like on a special day on the Prairie Fest, for the prices to be lower. Maybe if like staffs pay a little bit lower. Consent Agenda. We have two items. If there are no objections, I'd like to attain a motion.
I'd make the motion.
I would like to make a motion. Second.
A motion second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Amaranta Aguilar.
Here.
City Manager Dylan Cliss.
Here.
City Attorney Olivia. City Attorney Hubert.
Here.
Alderman Olivia.
Here.
Treasurer Moses.
Here.
Alderman Aaliyah.
Here.
Alderman Isabella.
Here.
Alderman Angelina.
Yes.
Alderman Gabriella.
Here.
Alderman Javier.
Yes.
Alderman Aileen.
Yes.
Alderman Justina.
Yes.
Alderman Christos.
Here. Next, I need a, an motion to approve the agenda. Items on the agenda.
Second.
Item number one. A resolution authorizing a, an agreement between the city of Wooddale and CTR Systems, for the fiscal year 2020, Irving Park Road, Sewer Repair Project in a not, hmm, not to exceed amount of seventeen thousand dollars. Item number two, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the fi, fi, fiscal year 2020, bulk rock, salt, and concrete-
Contract.
Contract in a, an amount of not to exceed of eighty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents.
I will make a motion.
I make the motion.
I second the motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Second.
Second.
Mayor Amaranta Aguilar.
Here.
City Manager Dylan Cliss.
Here.
City Attorney Hubert.
Here.
Alderman Olivia.
Yes.
Treasurer Moses.
Yes.
Alderman Aaliyah.
Yes.
Alderman Isabella.
Yes.
Alderman Angelina.
Yes.
Alderman Gabriella.
Yes.
Alderman Javier.
Yes.
Alderman Aileen.
Yes.
Alderman Justina.
Yes.
Alderman Christos.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, Community Chair in the ports. Alderman Woods. Finance Administration. Alderman Woods. Planning and zoning. Alderman Messina.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health safety.
No report, Mayor.
To disterics. Ethics Committee. Alderman Sorrentino.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, commit, Committee. Alderman Carolina.
I have two, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Approve, approval final to BM and T Company for mes, mesenary, Dog Point, mm, of Saw Creek Greenway Trail Pedestrian Bridge in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-two and fifty cents. That's my motion.
Do you have a second? Do we have a- Any questions?
I have a question.
Question on end sites. Question on end sites. Go ahead.
Is that a completion, complete, complication of the whole project?
Yes, this is the completion of the first phase, which is all masonry work around structural for the bridge.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where is this? The pedestrian bridge um at?
It's on Irving Park by the Jewel Target.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mayor Almaranta?
Here.
City manager Dylan?
Here.
City attorney Hubert? Alderman Olivia?
Yes.
Treasure Moses?
Yes.
Alderman Aleah?
Yes.
Alderman Isabella?
Yes.
Alderman Angelina?
No.
Alderman Gabriella?
Yes.
Alderman Javier?
Yes.
Alderman Aileen?
Here.
Alderman Justina? Justina? Alderman Christos?
Yes.
And that passes.
I got one more mayor.
Go ahead.
Approval of final payment to, approval of fin- approval of final payment to Kim Construction for the two thousand eighteen sen- sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one and twenty-five cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Bro- Any questions? Go ahead Alderman. Is it a completed project?
No, this is a completed project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, we have one.
How much longer? Will the sewers last with this project?
Fallon, could you answer that please?
Was the question, what was this project?
How long will the sewers last after the project's complete?
Oh, they should last for probably fifty, sixty years hopefully.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mayor Almaranta?
Yes.
City manager Dylan?
Yes.
City attorney Hubert? Alderman Olivia?
Hola.
Treasure Moses?
Yes.
Alderman Aleah?
Yes.
Alderman Isabella?
Yes.
Alderman Angelina?
I.
Angel- Alderman Gabriella?
Yes.
Alderman Javier?
Of course.
Alderman Aileen?
Yes.
Alderman Justina?
Yes.
Alderman Christos?
Yes.
That passes.
That is the end of my report mayor.
Thank you. Next financing, financing administration. Alderman Woods.
I have two reports mayor.
Go ahead.
Municipal aggregation renewal twenty nineteen. Traditional option. Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so, this'll be fun. Yeah, a number of years ago, um, by way of, of vote by um, the electorate, so your parents go and vote, uh, they voted in a program by where the city could go out and negotiate better energy rates for the residents and small businesses of Wooddale than they could perhaps get on their own. So every year we have to go and get prices from the suppliers for that program. You're all lucky enough to be a part of it this year, and we got the pricing earlier uh today, and we do have our friend Mr. Hoover uh from the uh firm that helps us out with this. And the prices came in uh not favorable. Um, so you'll notice up here at the top, the COMED rate, a blended rate of seven point zero five cents. And then you'll notice every rate here in this column, which is what we would be paying, is higher than the COMED rate in the, what's considered the traditional program. Um, so clearly this is not a savings since these uh amounts are all higher than what the COMED rate is gonna be. So I would um graciously request that the motion for the traditional program that was just made, I would um encourage you all to vote no to that particular motion so that we can then discuss the green energy option uh which would be next, because if you were to vote yes for this, um, all of your parents would wind up spending more money.
Um, there was, there, there is no motion. As of yet.
Okay. My apologies. Well, when there is a motion, um, when there is a motion, um, I would implore you to vote no, or else you would be costing your parents more money, so I'm guessing they probably would want you to vote no as well, so. And then we can move on to the, to the next portion of this.
I make a motion to approve. Municipal aggregation renewal twenty nineteen, a hundred- traditional option.
Do I have a second? Second. Roll call please. Go ahead.
Director Wilson? Next time? Next time could you give us a magnifying glass because we can't see it? There you go. Well done.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mayor Almaranta?
No.
City manager Dylan?
Yes.
City attorney Hubert? Alderman Olivia?
Here.
Treasure Moses?
Yes.
Alderman Aleah?
No.
Alderman Isabella?
No.
Alderman Angelina?
Nay.
Alderman Gabriella?
No.
Alderman Javier?
Nay.
Alderman Aileen?
Nope.
Alderman Justina?
No.
Alderman Christos?
No.
That fails. Next Alderman Woods.
Municipal aggregation renewal twenty nineteen, a hundred percent green energy option. Mr. Wilson? Motion. Approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, yeah, so this option um is an option that is new to the aggregation program this year. And what it is, is ultimately um the residents would wind up paying the same rate as the COMED rate, which is what they would pay if the program were to um be suspended, um, so everybody would go back to COMED and pay the same rate as COMED. The difference with this program is that the company um that we've been working with the last few years is going to provide one hundred percent green energy to the city, to the residents and small businesses of the city, for the same price as the COMED rate, which is only a portion green and then the rest fossil fuels. Uh, so you can see on the screen here is an estimate of what some of the uh savings, uh environmentally speaking, uh would be if the city were to opt to go with the hundred percent green option versus uh going back to COMED. Uh, so at this point, the rate is going to be the same, uh whether you're with this program or whether they go back to COMED. Um, so I believe earlier today I said that we would recommend going with this option, I know there's a push currently to go green. Uh, we do have the uh Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Committee um that works on things, but at the end of the day, the price would be the same uh, you know, for your parents and the small businesses. So it's really a, I guess, a philosophical decision at this point as to whether or not to go with the green energy or the traditional COMED blend of energy. One thing I will say, um, well, I'll leave it open for questions at this point, but I'm pretty sure there's be a couple, but uh I'll leave it.
Any questions? No ques- Roll call please.
Mayor Almaranta?
Yes.
City manager Dylan?
No.
City attorney Hubert? Alderman Olivia?
Absent.
Treasure Moses?
No.
Alderman Aleah?
Yes.
Alderman Isabella?
Yes.
Alderman Angelina?
Yes.
Alderman Gabriella?
Yes.
Alderman Javier?
Yes.
Alderman Aileen?
Yes.
Alderman Justina?
Yes.
Alderman Christos?
Yes.
Then that passes. Next under, under business airport. Noise report. Alderman Messina.
No report.
No report.
Next Alderman, I mean, next under- Stormwater Commission, Alderman E. Wesley.
No report.
I apologize Alderman Woods, do you have any other items of, for the agenda?
No, that's the end, end of my report.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on one second. Just so everyone knows, we had one other item, a resolution authorizing city of Wooddale, item C on the, on their other business was removed from the meeting this evening. Yes. It's not ready. So next we go to approve a list of bills.
Approve a listed, a list of bills. Alderman Woods.
I make a motion to approve.
The second.
List of bills for five sixteen nineteen. In the amount of? One million. Five hundred sixty-four thousand, eight- eight hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Is that your emotion?
Yes.
And we have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead Alderman.
Um, what is it for?
It's for all the data, uh da- operations and the projects that are going, ongoing. Any other questions? Go ahead.
What is a Comcast audit?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So the Comcast audit, um, back probably six months ago or so, uh, the city engaged a firm called Azovar, who I believe is who the bill is payable to on the list of bills, to audit the utility bills of the city, and then also to audit the boundaries of the city to see what monies were being reported to the city uh from a tax basis. And what they found on our Comcast bill, which um was about eight thousand dollars a month, which includes all the internet and phones and everything for the city, for the day-to-day operations, they found some federal taxes and tariffs on there that uh we could be exempted for if you knew how to fill the paperwork out correctly. Uh, and so with their expertise, they helped us remove those taxes from the bill. And since it's a contingency-based audit, meaning that they don't get paid unless they find something, uh, this is their portion that they're receiving back for finding the relief in those taxes and tariffs from the Comcast bill.
Do we know how much we saved?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, it was approximately seven hundred dollars per month that we saved, and like I said, and then what's on the uh list of bills is their share, again, based upon the agreement that we uh entered into with them. I mean, I, I would say yes, but that's I guess between her and her parents, so I don't.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Can we put those savings in the wooden bill? What a bill? Wooden bill?
Well, we'll consider that. Do you have another question? Alderman at the end. I apologize. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mayor Amaranta?
Yes.
City Manager Dillon?
Yes.
City Attorney Hubert? Alderman Olivia?
Yes.
Treasurer Moses?
Yes.
Alderman Aleah?
Yes.
Alderman Isabella?
Yes.
Alderman Angelina?
Aye.
Alderman Gabriella?
Yes.
Alderman Javier?
Yes.
Alderman Aileen?
Yes.
Alderman Justina?
Yes.
Alderman Christos?
Yes.
And that passes.
Before we go to adjournment, uh, just wanna thank the students for participating today and the teachers. I'll let Alderman Woods, since he takes the lead on this project, speak a little bit on, glad I know what's. Just a little bit, never met him like I didn't like. Anyway, I'd like to thank everybody, the, the children, the school system, the teachers that participated, that they think is the seventh year. And every year, it's pretty fun to hear them come and visit with them and get ideas of what they're thinking about. We worked through some of the things that we worked through on the council, like when they were talking about the parks, we had them vote on a park, right? And some people wanted other things, streets fixed, or didn't see that, uh, putting money into the park was a good idea, because we had parks, so they, they kinda played around and worked out that idea and found out it wasn't as easy as everybody thought it was. And secondly, I'd like to thank the teachers, Ms. Minor, uh, and my favorite, uh, daughter, Mrs. Wykenheim. Well, that's my only daughter, but she's still my favorite. Thanks for pointing that out, I was going to. So, uh, this is a great event, and it's great to see all the parents come out and support this, too. Thank you. And just before everybody leaves, we wanna take some photos with the students, uh, up here on the dais, and parents wanna take a picture back here with the kids and with the council. That'll be right after. And we have some certificates for them. I need a motion to adj- Hold on one second, we still have to finish one more item. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session for land acquisition. Go ahead, say it.
Need a motion to, for adjourn
I'll make a mo-
And to exec- exec- is, ex- executive session.
Motion, I'll make the motion to-
Hold on one second.
For land acro- acquisition. And review of the official minutes.
Motion, I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
That passes, we're adjourned.
That, that passes, we're adjourned, thank you.